We got about thirty seconds till six thirty. So just still trying to upload it. Hey, it is six thirty now, sir.
I call this regular meeting order for May twelfth, twenty twenty. Please call the roll.
Mayor Richard Buss. Mayor Pro Tem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald. You're muted.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Ridden.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
Present.
City manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
The clerk's present. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. If everyone would please stand, we'll have the invocation that be given by our city clerk, Rachel Hughes, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Baldwin. Everyone would please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you in prayer this evening, just thanking you for another day of life. Dear Lord, we ask that you will just lead our commission. Dear God, decisions that are to be made tonight. Dear God, and we thank you that even in the middest of this virus, dear Lord, I thank you because there's many people out there that are helping each other in the community with kindness, dear Lord, and just with the people that are bringing food to the elderly, dear God. To those, dear Lord, that feel alone, to those that are hurting financially, dear Lord, and physically, and those that have lost loved ones, dear God also. I ask that you be with them, dear Lord, and dear God, you haven't given us the spirit of fear, but that of sound judgment and love, dear God, and that's what we ask for here tonight. Dear Lord, that you will just bless our commission, our leaders, dear God, not only in the city level, but in the wide and worldwide, dear Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, I'm gonna lead you in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to have like rich hands, one nation, under God, in the people who is delivered to me and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel, and thank you, Commissioner Baldwin. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Commissioner Baldwin.
Who? That was Commissioner Ridden?
Baldwin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Baldwin. I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes seven zero. Move on to public comment. Do we have any comments, Rachel?
We don't, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to the city manager's report. Brian Caesar, city manager.
All right, tonight I just have two items. The first, if you haven't heard them, the governor is going to give a press conference tomorrow at three, hopefully relaxing some of the restrictions that we have throughout the state. From the city standpoint, we have through Jim McClair, emergency operations manager, also our fire chief, obviously. He and his staff and other city staff have worked over the past week and a half, two weeks to ensure that we have the thermometers, the masks, all the other items that the businesses that are open right now are required to use. We're assuming that we're going to have to do the same thing that the the other businesses are as we start to open up. When we get the word from the governor, it'll be probably percentages of staff that we can have and members of the public in our various buildings. There are going to be areas that will be shut down and shut down, I'm assuming, for an extended period of time, such as like the rec center. With right now only being able to have five people gathering at one time, we obviously can't open up the the recreation center. We have received word from the state on the senior center that more than likely for people to go inside the building and utilize the facility, that that will be not till the end of December at the earliest, is what we've been told. The other item I had, everyone needs to say a big happy birthday to the mayor.
That's what I was gonna do. You got it, Brian.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's why he shaved.
I would, I would.
Happy birthday, Richard.
Yeah, it's last fifty-five.
I would sing to him, but you don't want to hear that.
Well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Richard.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Can we hear? Somebody say something.
You there?
Yes, we got you. Okay. We will move on then to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anyone have any comments to make, commissioners? I do have, if you'll bear with me, I have a couple of things that I want to do and start with, let me explain this to you. Jim Hackett, the CEO of Daryl Champion Regional Medical Center, had wanted to make a presentation and Rachel, we tried to work it out, thought he could do that, and felt like doing it in this format would be too difficult, so he and I worked on it today and I'm gonna, he gave me some slides that we can't, we can't put up, but I can do this, I think, rather quickly in between two pieces, or one of which the commissioners have, you've seen this information anyway, but he does want to get out to the public some of the things that are going on at the hospital, so I'm gonna try to give Jim Hackett's report to the city and to the commission, if that's okay with everybody. Is everybody in agreement with that? All right. Hospital is prepared, their dedicated COVID emergency room entrance. They have that, their dedicated inpatient COVID COVID unit is, has been converted inpatient rehabilitation unit to a COVID nineteen dedicated unit with an initial capacity of fifteen that can be expanded to thirty-two. Right now, they can take fifteen people, but they can very easily expand that to thirty-two people if the need arises. Hopefully that won't happen. Patients now are rapidly tested for for the virus before being transferred to the inpatient unit, and they've got a real quick test that does that. That is, see what the name of that test is, there's a name for it. I apologize for this, it's, I'm having to jump back and forth. We'll come back to that. Anyway, a little report on what the hospital has done, they've performed nine hundred and ninety-three tests. Ninety-four percent of the tests done in Otero County, there have been eight positives to date. All admissions to the hospital must be tested by the CEPHEAD COVID nineteen rapid test before they are admitted to the inpatient unit. And that's the name of the device that I was trying to come up with in the last comment. Most capable hospital, they are the most capable hospital in the state of New Mexico for for testing at this point. The hospital additionally serves as a regional testing facility, providing rapid testing to Mountain View Memorial and the rehab of New Mexico Las Cruces and Artesia and Rios hospitals. The date the lab has performed, two hundred and fifty-four tests. The hospital is well, well positioned with its supply of the PPE equipment, gloves, masks, gowns, and face shields, the personal protection equipment. They've got plenty of that on hand. They're not anticipating any situation that they would need more. Hopefully that doesn't happen. The hospital is locked down, there's no visitors. There's a separate for the virus, there's separate patient flow, and I've been down there, I drove by there just to see how they were doing. They've got it set to where if you come into the emergency room, there's emergency room access, you've, you're, you can't just go into the hospital. Somebody comes out and they will greet you and find out where you need to be, and I know their, their technique is readily available, they've got excellent infection control tools, they've got what's called germ blast, and they've got ultraviolet light, and they've got swipe sense, and the swipe sense is kind of cool. They can actually tell if you've been washing your hands for a regular basis, how they do that I know, but it's a monitor that watches, that checks if you're washing your hands, so they're really watching very carefully on the, if, that the COVID virus doesn't get out in the hospital. They do one hundred percent screening and entry points to the hospital and ambulatory clinics, and they do that by taking temperature and they and when you come in, you're also required, they give you a mask, and you're required to wear a mask for that four months. Going forward, they're gonna have ambulance surgeries will resume Wednesday, May eighteenth, which is tomorrow, on a gradual basis. Main hospital operating room will resume on Monday, May eighteenth, on a gradual basis. Physician practices, which they have twenty-eight of, will be resumed operations over a light period of time. It's not gonna happen overnight, but they're in the process during that, and all of their construction projects are scheduled as construction was not interrupted So anyway, that's a report on behalf of Jim Hackett from the hospital. I have a couple, one, a couple of other little items here, I found them.
Richard.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question?
Mr. Payne, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, sorry about that. Did, I, I don't, I don't know if I understood, we're, have, did you say eight cases in Otero? Is that what you said?
Eight cases in Otero County. No, I think, yeah, no, did I say eight? I think there's eight of which were, what did I say?
Said eight positives out of the nine hundred and something tests.
That's what it, that's what it says.
And, but that's all of Otero County. Right?
No, that was just tested at the hospital.
No, that, that's right.
Okay. So I, actually, what my question is, is do we know if any or how many of those were hospitalized? Or if any were hospitalized?
I don't have that information.
Okay, okay.
That's a good question, but I don't have it.
Okay.
Quickly, I'd like to, any other comments, questions? Okay, I want to remind everybody, the Forest Service has been announcing the fact that the fire danger in our mountains up here is extreme. I mean, it's very, very dry conditions, and everybody keep in mind, when you turn your faucet on or flush your toilet or take a bath, those, those mountains are providing the water for us to do that with, and we want to make sure we protect that forest, so if you're up there or if you have friends that are going up there, causing them right now fire restrictions, I don't believe they're allowed any fires. I think they've shut it, fires down completely. They did have fires in designated areas, but I don't think there's any fires anywhere. So if you see somebody with a fire at the end, and you're up there, report it because they need, it needs to be put out. And I know that sounds harsh, but it's very important to us. We can't, we don't want to lose our water supply to a, to a fire season. One I want to talk about is the census. I think everyone knows a twenty twenty census now and has been in process for several months. Each home in Alamo should have received an invitation to respond to a short questionnaire. You can respond by mail or online. Everyone who has not yet responded to, to do so, please do so, because it's very important. The census provides critical data that lawmakers, business owners, teachers, and others use for a multitude of data. Funding for hospitals, fire departments, schools, roads, and much more is determined in many cases by the census. The census determines the number of seats each state will have in the US House of Representatives. The state is also used to draw the congressional and and state legislative districts. Funding for our state and local government projects can be affected, so please respond to your invitation. I've heard from many, many people that the last census that was taken ten years ago, that not very many people feel that it was done completely and accurately, and this time we need to try to get as accurate as we can because it is very, very important to our community. Anyway. Okay, if there's no other commissioner comments, I'm done, so I will, we'll move on to the consent agenda with any staff member or commissioner, like to remove any item on the consent agenda.
Like to pull item three.
Mr. Ridden would like to pull item three. Any others? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve items one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. And that's my motion.
And twelve.
And eleven and twelve. There's also.
Why don't I, I don't, I don't have a twelve.
Okay, twelve on Nadia is considered an act upon acceptance of a thirty thousand dollar CARES Act grant award from a FFA, from the FFA to the Alamo Airport.
I'll include item twelve.
Okay, very good.
I'll second.
I missed the second, who was it?
It was Josh Ridden.
Okay, Josh.
Commissioner Ridden.
Okay, I have a motion to approve consent agenda as adjusted by removal of item three from first, who made the motion?
Nadia.
Motion.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, and I have a second from Commissioner Ridden. Please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Ridden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Dusty, you're muted.
Dusty?
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Buss.
Aye. Motion passes six, one.
Who, who voted against it?
Oh, no, six, zero. Did you, but didn't you? No, I'm sorry, you didn't, you didn't. I'm sorry, the motion passes seven, zero.
Yeah.
Seven, zero. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Ridden. The items removed from the consent agenda, that being item three, considered an act upon ordinance sixteen oh one for final publication, adopting municipal gross receipts tax and repeating ordinance fifteen ninety-four. Our assistant city manager, Stephanie Hernandez, will give us some information on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just asked to pull it because I voted no on it the last time. That's the only reason I pulled it, so I can just vote no is the only reason.
Okay, then we can, would, do I hear a motion to approve item three?
I move that we approve item three.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes to approve item three.
Commissioner Baldwin, seconds.
I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Ridden.
No.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Buss.
Aye. Motion passes six, four, one again. Move on to public hearings. Item thirteen, considered an act upon application number one, five, three, six, two, seven, a beer and wine liquor license with on the premises consumption only, located at ten twenty-two North White Sands Boulevard to Pluto Off the Wall LLC DBA Off the Wall, where business is off the wall. Rachel, do you have, can you give us information on that?
Oh, Mr. Patrick French is actually here in our meeting. In case you have any questions, and is actually, his item did have to be pushed back just a few weeks because we haven't been having commission meetings until now, but his application is, just as you stated, he is seeking to have a restaurant beer and wine liquor license with on the premises consumption.
Mr. French, did you want to make any comment?
No, I have none at the moment.
Okay. And in discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Baldwin, just with a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't the clerk generally give us some information about this, like letters were sent out, no replies? Am I confusing this process?
Um, so this is, that was all in the packet, and so there weren't any letters sent out because this is, that usually, let's see. So our planning and zoning department did do an analysis back twentieth, two thousand nineteen. And so what their letter does say is that they've researched it and they determine that the zoning classification is so it's for business, and so they are in according to our to our ordinances, because he's in a C three zone. So it is allowed for restaurants, so that also allows for liquor licenses if approved.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question. I don't know if Josh was gonna do this all out of him.
Oh, you can, go ahead.
Then I would make a motion that we approve item number thirteen for application eleven fifty-three, six, twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve item thirteen, application number eleven, five, three, six, two, seven, from Commissioner Baldwin. I have a second from Commissioner Ridden. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Mr.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr.
Yeah, congratulations, Mr. French. Well done. Good luck.
Thank you. You guys gotta come eat.
That's right. If you haven't eaten at a restaurant, you gotta try it out. It's really good.
When, when we, when we can go to a restaurant. And hopefully.
I don't eat much these days, but I gotta tell you, it was good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. French.
If I can say one thing to Mr. French, my wife and I picked up something to go there a couple of days ago, and I got the jerk steak, was it jerk? No, the teriyaki steak, and you warned me that it was salty, and man, was it good. A little salty, but man, it was really good.
Swiss cheese cut it. Swiss cheese cut it.
Yeah, that's right. Well done. You guys doing curbside, you doing curbside pickup there, Mr. French?
Yes, you can call in to pick up, and we also do, we deliver out of them.
You're doing, we deliver? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
We'll move on to new business, item fourteen, considered an act upon first publication of ordinance sixteen fourteen, adopting international fire code twenty fifteen and amending certain sections of chapter twelve, fire potential and fire prevention and protection. And Chief McClair, were you gonna give us some information on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jim, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commission, City Manager. Tonight, I'm bringing to you the first publication of ordinance sixteen fourteen, and I'm asking commission to adopt international fire code two thousand and fifteen. Currently, we're in the two thousand and three edition, we're about five publications behind the rest of the state. That includes the state fire marshal's office and the construction industry division. With the adoption of this code, what it'll do for the city is it'll bring us in line and our codes will read exactly the same. Currently, they don't read the same. So, and additionally, it will also clean up chapter twelve. Just cleaning up chapter twelve, and that's basically what we're, I, and I, I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Mr. Mayor, we've got a couple of questions.
Commissioner Ridden.
Hey, Jim, on here, under the definition section, I don't know if you have the ordinance up there with you, but it says the term fire marshal used in this chapter shall mean any fire staff of the fire department who has achieved status of inspector through certification. How many, how many people do we have that have achieved that?
So, right now, there are approximately, I would say somewhere around fourteen of my staff members that are inspector level. So, and, and they work under, under my direction. So currently, and, and to add to that, all of fire staff are required to be inspector level because we run an inspection program due to our staffing levels. So we run a company inspection program due to our staffing levels.
But when we do, like, that's the only reason I'm asking because of the trade. We do our finals on our permits and stuff before the, you know, before the building inspector comes in. Can it be, y'all will come in with any fire department or any firefighter, or will it be you or Jerry, like it usually is, or?
So in regards to your final inspections, normally the state fire marshal is involved in your final inspections. All we do is assist them, so that's normally how it works. In regards to your fire inspection, it'll either be myself, the deputy chief, or a fire, a fire department staff member.
Okay, and then one other quick question, and kind of due to my trade as well. Section twelve, two, oh, three, oh, it says the storage of flammable or combustible liquids. What are we gonna do? It says in here that they're, they're prohibited. What if we have like existing companies that have above ground tanks for die diesel or that kind of thing? How are we going to handle that?
So it'll be handled the exact same way that we've handled it in the past. None of that is gonna actually change. The only thing that I recall correctly is the chapters, the chapters have actually changed in that in the international fire code two thousand and fifteen edition compared to the two thousand and three. So none of that is actually gonna change. It's all gonna stay the same.
Okay, it just, the thing that concerned me is, is the ordinance reads, the storage of flammable combustible liquids and outside above ground tanks is prohibited, except those constructed in accordance with, but I didn't know with the section there what all that is, because it just gives us a number.
I would, and I actually, Commissioner Ridden, I would have to do a little bit of research on that. To get you, to get you a good answer. But I don't have that ordinance in front of me, and I don't have the, I don't actually have the the, the international fire code edition in front of me either.
Okay. Just like, I'm not worried about it. As long as you're here, it's just down the road after we pass this and you retired. It says it's prohibited, and if we got a tyrant in there, they may go around shutting down people with their, their fuel tanks that they use for their equipment and that kind of stuff, so.
Right.
That being said, all the, or unless anybody else has comments, I'll make a motion to approve item fourteen.
Motion to approve item fourteen. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Who is the second? Oh, Chris, all right. Yes, Commissioner Baldwin. I have a second from Commissioner Baldwin. Please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Yes.
Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Ridden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Buss.
Yes, I had to do that. Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. If you might consider, Chief McClair, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You might consider looking at if what did change, maybe make the commissioner aware of that. For the chance.
Yes, sir, I'll follow up with him on that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, considered an act upon award, public work bid number twenty twenty dash zero zero two to Laloo's Dirt and Paving LLC related to the Grex Field Detention Bond Project in an amount not to exceed five hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, including Mexico Gross Receipts Act. And I think we have Bob Johnson, we have Bob here, we do. Engineering manager, give us information on that.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, members of the commission, city manager Caesar. The item before you is Public Works Bid twenty twenty dash oh oh two, award to Laloo's Dirt and Paving for approximately five hundred and two thousand, including NMGRT. The work will consist of drainage and flood control enhancements, construction of a below-grade stormwater detention basin, linear channel grading, and a reinforced The work will consist of drainage and flood control enhancements, construction of a below grade stormwater detention basin, linear channel grading, and a reinforced concrete spillway structure. We advertised for bids on March eighteenth and the twenty-second, we opened bids on, at two PM on April the sixteenth. We had eight bids received, three bids were local, one bid was from Laloo's. One bid was from Las Cruces, and the other remaining bids were from north of the northern half of the state. Staff is recommending approval of the award to Laloo's Dirt and Paving LLC.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, who was it? Oh, Commissioner McDonald.
I, I think this is my first time looking at the bids as they come in. And the worksheet or the chart is in two parts. The first part has a dollar amount for Laloo's of four hundred and sixty thousand. And then in the bottom half, the same, it's not the same company. But then it has forty-one thousand dollars totaling the five hundred and two thousand. And I just wanted to ask, what is the difference between the two? And it's on, well, I have a question on all of them, but.
Right, the, the first amount on the bid tabulation of, of four hundred and eighty thousand. Is for the base bid work. Because we were unsure if bids would, would come in for budget. We elected to put all of the chain link fencing work as a bid alternate. That allows the city to either accept the award or, or reject it. If it had exceeded available funding. In this particular case, the bid alternate work was within available funding, so staff is recommending approval of the base bid work. As well as the chain link work as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm sorry, were you done, Commissioner McDonald?
I, I did have another question because in the first half, the concrete is one price, and then in the second half, it's another. It's, it's the same grade, but I just wanted to know the difference.
I, I fail to understand your question, there is no concrete shown in the, in the bid.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at two, but I'll wait until the next one, I'm done.
Mr. Payne.
My question is, I always get nervous when I see one contractor that's like way lower than everybody else. You have an answer for that, I can tell, so.
Yes, ma'am.
The answer, I, I just, I just wanna make sure that nothing comes back to bite us, I'm just sure it won't, but, you know, I, I thought I'd ask.
Well, there are multiple answers to your question. Staff had the same concerns whenever we have a bid that is disproportionately low compared to the rest of the bids.
Right.
And what is typical for engineering staff is we, in writing, reached out to the apparent low bidder, Laloo's Dirt and Paving. Mr. Joel Danley is the general manager for that firm. Which I, I personally have known Mr. Danley for about two decades. But regardless of that, we had asked Laloo's Dirt and Paving to verify or confirm their bid in writing. Not as an opportunity to increase their bid, but as. To verify that their numbers are correct or give them an opportunity to withdraw their bid if they felt that they had erred. They confirmed in writing that their numbers were accurate. So the, the staff was satisfied with that response. In addition, my conversations with a number of general contractors over the past couple of weeks. Have indicated that with the current economic downturn associated with COVID nineteen epidemic or pandemic. We're finding that a lot of contractors are trying to keep their doors open and trying to keep their staff employed. There are not a lot of bidding opportunities within the general region. To keep. Construction contractors going. Going out of town for a lot of our local contractors is not real attractive because a lot of hotels. And other places lodging are restricting movement within those areas. So people are trying to stay as close to home as they can. A number of contractors I've talked to are, are literally bidding work at or close to cost.
Cost, okay.
Lowering their overhead and profit rates, just to keep their folks gainfully employed. Laloo's Dirt and Paving is a much smaller firm than their competitors. And I have verified that they actually own all of their equipment versus leasing it to own or renting it. So I, I feel like that in combination with all of those things. We are not in any danger of this thing being change ordered to death. The city has awarded several projects to Laloo's Dirt and Paving over the past couple of years. All of those projects have come in on or below budget and on time. This firm is not known for change orders.
Okay, I just have to ask, because it is.
Understood, understood, staff had the same concerns.
Quite, well, that's good, I mean, that makes me feel better, because you know me in construction, I'm not, I'm not great at it, but numbers I get, so.
Any other questions for Bob? If not, do I hear a motion regarding item fifteen?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make, I'll make a motion, we approve public works bid, item fifteen, public works bid twenty twenty dash zero two.
I have a motion from Commissioner Riden to approve item fifteen. I have a second from Commissioner Wright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? I can't see everybody, not voting. Okay, motion passes seven zero, thank you. Move on to item sixteen, consider an act upon. Pardon me?
I just wanted to thank Bob.
Oh, yes.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Move on to item sixteen, consider an act upon award of public works bid number twenty two zero zero four to General Hydronics Concrete LLC. Related to the Alta Vista Compliance Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed three hundred sixty-three thousand seventy-four dollars and ninety-four cents, including the Mexico Grocery Sales Tax. New Mexico Grocery Sales Tax, again, we have Bob Johnson, our engineering manager, give us information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, members of the Commission, City Manager Caesar. This project is to award the Alta Vista Compliance Improvements Project. For approximately three hundred and sixty-three thousand to General Hydronics Concrete LLC. The work will consist of removal and replacement of concrete sidewalk, driveway, aprons, and curb and gutter. Construction of new accessible ADA curb ramps, earthwork, asphalt paving, asphalt patchwork, traffic control and pertinences. We did advertise the project for bids on March twenty-ninth and April fifth. We opened bids on April the twenty-ninth, we had two bids received, General Hydronics Concrete and Coal Constructors Incorporated. Staff is recommending approval of the award to General Hydronics Concrete. This project is funded by a federal allocation through HUD. It is total federal dollars. Pursuant to HUD requirements, we had a mandatory pre-bid conference, only those bidders that attended that conference were allowed to bid. The only two bidders that attended were in fact General Hydronics Concrete and Coal Constructors. And the results are as you see them on the bid tabulation. This work will take place in the Alta Vista Housing Authority area. Just west of City Hall, off of Seventh Street.
Any comments or questions of Bob? If not, do I hear a motion regarding item sixteen?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Baldwin will make a motion to approve item sixteen, award of public bid work two zero two zero dash zero zero four.
Commissioner Riden will second.
I have a motion from Baldwin to approve item sixteen, public works bid number twenty twenty zero zero four, and a second from Commissioner Wright.
No.
No.
Commissioner Wright will abstain.
Oh.
Yeah, it's Commissioner Riden.
You had a question, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to abstain from the smoke.
You want, what, I'm sorry, okay, I got you. Oh, the second is from Commissioner Riden, and we have Commissioner Wright abstaining from voting. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes six, zip, six, one abstention. We want item seventeen, consider an act upon approval of amendment, amendment one to Smith Engineering Company related to Alta Vista. In an amount not to exceed eight thousand two seven, two hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Including the Mexico Grocery Sales Tax, and again, our engineering manager, Bob Johnson, will give us information on that, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, members of the Commission, City Manager Caesar. This item is to approve an amendment to incorporate additional construction phase services. Authorized within the existing engineering services agreement, our standard engineering services agreement. Allows for, should staff determine it, and it's on a case by case basis. To incorporate additional construction phase services. This will consist of material approvals, submittal reviews. Monthly payment application, reviews and approvals commensurate with site inspections. And a number of other issues or a number of other aspects of a project involving pre-final inspections, compliance with the. Plans and specifications, so on and so forth. Again, we do this on a case by case basis, it is strictly project specific. And it is allowable within the scope of the original engineering services agreement.
Any comments, questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve item seventeen?
Mr. Mayor, I got one quick question on that, sorry.
Mr. Riden.
Hey, Bob, you said this is just, this is for the engineering services for this project that we just approved for the item sixteen, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's wasn't included in the original, I mean, this is for the, basically the, the handling the paperwork for us.
Correct, correct, the original engineering services agreement was strictly for to the design work itself. It did not go beyond plans and specs. This amendment will allow to us go beyond the actual award of the project. As far as the pre-construction conference, responding to RFIs. Reviewing the material approval submittals. Performing the ASBELL drawings and such, and, and things along those lines. None of that was in the original con, contract.
Okay, we don't foresee any other change orders on this project from these engineering, this engineering firm, do we?
Absolutely not, Smith Engineering has been. Someone that we've been working with for about three years now, and. They have gained the respect of a lot of the engineering staff as well as water operations staff. We have been working with them on a number of different projects, and they have been Johnny on the spot every time, and. They're not prone for cost increases. And they're one of the more reasonable consultants we're dealing with right now. They're a fairly small firm.
Okay, I was gonna say, one other quick question, because I've got this going on another project, they, they don't hold up on like their RFIs and stuff, they don't take forever to. Get you answers and that kind of stuff, do they?
No, in our experience, it's next day or within forty-eight hour response time.
Okay.
This is, this project is primarily flat work. As far as sidewalks and ADA ramps, so there shouldn't be a lot of issues with it.
Okay.
Mr. Sykes?
I just have a quick question, Bob, when do you anticipate starting the project, and how long do you think it's going to? Take to complete it?
And if. I don't, I don't have the performance period in front of me. But I believe it was approximately five months. And once Commission, or since Commission has approved the project on the previous item, we will issue out the agreement and notice of award tomorrow. I would expect that we would start the project within about three weeks. Depending on the coordination from Public Housing Authority staff. They've indicated they've already notified the housing occupants of the upcoming project. So we anticipate it to start within less than thirty days.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve items.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, or eight, yeah, seventeen, sorry.
I have a motion from Commissioner Riden to approve item seventeen, do I hear a second?
Mayor Pro Tem seconds.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes seven zero. Bob, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I will, I believe that concludes my participation in this meeting, and I will bow out at this point.
Stay, stay safe, have a good evening.
Thanks.
You too, Bob, thanks.
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 To item eighteen, consider an act upon first publication of ordinance sixteen sixteen and ordinance amending oh two dash oh three dash four four oh. Through oh two, oh three, five six oh. Of the Alma Code of Ordinances Regarding Labor Relations. Katie Johnson, our human resources director, has gonna give us some information on that, Katie, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Boss and Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, Commission, City Manager Caesar. I'm, I'm here this evening to ask Commission's approval of the first publication of this ordinance that is effectively. Just removing our labor relations ordinance. During the state legislative, legislative session this past spring. House Bill three sixty-four was passed by the House and the Senate and signed into law by the governor. The legislation makes changes to the way the city bargains with its employees, invalidates the city's labor relations board. And changes union eligibility, and also makes changes to policies regarding. Employee information, how that shared timelines for notice and bargaining. In the past, the city would have been grandfathered into its old ordinances, but this legislation was different, it strikes the city's ability to do so. So the city attorney conferred with longstanding outside counsel and union specialists, and Petria and I. Looked over this house bill, which was quite extensive. And agreed that the city should strike its ordinance. Labor relations, and all of the professionals that Petria conferred with agreed with that recommendation. The compliance deadline for this legislation is July one, twenty twenty. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to, to try to answer those.
I have a question.
Oh, okay, there you are.
Somebody want? Is everybody seeing what we're saying?
If nobody has any questions. I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to. Accept the first publication of ordinance amending the oh two dash oh three dash four four zero. Through five six zero, the Alamo Gordo Code of Ordinances Regarding Labor Relations.
Very good, we were having some technical difficulties, Commissioner, that's why we were, our mayor pro tem, that's why we were delaying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, but we, that's, that's fine, we're not, we're not able to see everybody, still not.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Riden, I'll second that motion, but my screen just says that Nadia Sykes is sharing something.
Yeah, yeah, Nadia, can you exit?
There we go.
There we go, we're back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Sykes. To approve item first publication of ordinance sixteen sixteen, I have a, from Commissioner Riden. All, the court please call the roll.
Jason Baldwin.
Aye.
Nadia Sykes. Nadia Sykes.
Aye.
Josh Roden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye.
Richard Bass.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item nineteen.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Um, I'm gonna go, we, I, I have the agenda report for, uh, the appointments to the various committees and I'm gonna read the ones that we have openings in and we do have, I have one to appoint. Uh, the Housing Authority Board, there is one two-year vacancy and one three-year vaca- no applications have been received. Finding a zoning commission with one vacancy, the vacancy is due to the expiring term of Beth Crab. Uh, Beth Crab has asked to be reappointed for her second term and if there is no, uh, if, if the, uh, commission is agreeable to that, I am going to reappoint Beth Crab to that position for a second term. Do I hear your objection? Then Beth Crab is so appointed. Uh, senior volunteer program advisory council, one vacancy, no applications received. White Spence Boulevard Beautification Committee, we have two vacancies and no applications received. That being said, if there's no further business for the good of the city, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I saw moved.
Who was that? Commissioner Redd?
Commissioner Redd.
Motion from Commissioner Redd to adjourn. I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. All those who are aye?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Everyone stay safe.
You too, Mayor, and happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday, Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Nice to see everybody. Y'all take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.